Watch Dale or Bobble, Mr. Joe, to be like, "You guys should be wearing masks."
All set?
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, let's call this meeting to order. It is 6:06. Would everyone like to stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, communications and correspondence.
I have none for the board this evening.
All right. Normally, this is when we would have public participation. As of our last board member meeting, we had requested that anybody wanting to publicly comment or participate to come in person. And obviously, we do not have anyone today, and that's perfectly fine. So, let's go on to new business. Consideration of Authorization of Personnel Committee to act on behalf of the school board in the months of June, July, and August.
This is an item that's been on your agendas for the past multiple number of years. One of the reasons is because this is a time of year where we're getting candidates. Our staff members are doing a lot of interviews, and we would like to, as we come to conclusions on the top candidates, have the opportunity to get them confirmed by the board. So, this is an opportunity to have the Personnel Committee act on the board's behalf in the event that the timing doesn't work out to bring a candidate directly to a board meeting like we have tonight and we're bringing it need tonight.
So, I will make a motion to authorize the Personnel Committee to act on behalf of the school board in confirming nominations of teachers in the months of June, July, and August. I second that motion. Any discussion? All in favor?
Thank you. And I'll just let our Personnel Committee know you can expect to be busy over the next week or so.
Absolutely.
Hope so.
Consideration for stipends for ESD administrators. So... This is a motion to approve payments of stipends to EDS administrators as recommended by the Finance Committee.
I move that we approve the payment of stipends to ESD administrators as recommended by the Finance Committee.
I second that motion. Would you like to have any discussion on this?
I would. So, I'm struggling with this a little bit. Just for the fact that it's a blanket amount amongst all administrators. And I also have concerns that we have employees in our system who have gone above and beyond due to COVID, and they're not being recognized or receiving extra payment for that, that are not an administrator or a teacher. And I know teachers have received extra money, and administrators are, but I just think about, like, folks like our ed techs who have been working their tails off because we've been short-staffed because of COVID. And there isn't something for that. You know, I'm just, that's what I'm struggling with, honestly.
And for me, I want to respond this way, Kelly.
Yeah.
Because the recommendations coming from the Finance Committee, not me.
Yes, absolutely. No, I know that.
Okay. So, one thing that I would like to put out there is, you know, when we look at a couple of things. One is, you know, you voted on administrator contracts the last time. This is a separate item from administrator contracts. Okay, that issue was resolved. And I think I'll let the representative of the Finance Committee talk. But there were conversations with the Finance Committee about wanting to recognize full-time administrators for work above and beyond, and I'll let Paul speak to that. But I would respond, Kelly, with some of our other employees, you referenced our teachers, and yes, teachers were paid a rate for time above and beyond, for planning time that they did. Our other hourly staff members were paid for time above and beyond. Okay, so if we had people who worked overtime hours, they were compensated. So, I think that's the one piece that I would put out there.
Yep.
I don't disagree with the fact that we've got a lot of employees across the district who have gone above and beyond, but our hourly people, who were not part of what teachers were eligible for, if they worked above and beyond their hours, were compensated.
Yep. Okay.
Yeah, and Jen, who's not here tonight, she and I are members of the Finance Committee, and we talked about this pretty thoroughly. We shared some of your concerns, but we looked at the fact that the teachers, we were able to compensate them at an hourly rate for additional work that they did outside of what was required by their contract. Teachers are paid salary, not, they're not hourly employees. Support staff, including ed techs, are hourly workers. And so, everyone who worked extra hours got compensated for all those extra hours. And sometimes there was, I'm sure there was some time and a half in there for overtime for some members. So, one of the things that I, just as an aside, one of the things that I'm concerned about is that there are teachers who may not have been paid for all the extra hourly, all the extra hours they worked, especially the extra hours that they worked before this program went into effect. But we did the best we could with the constraints that were, we were given on the use of the federal funds and when those funds were released and when the time period was that we could use those funds. So, we tried to be, come up with a system that would make the teachers feel like they were compensated for that extra work. As far as administrators, we did talk about having a different stipend for different administrators. But that conversation quickly became, we quickly came to the determination that that would be really difficult to sort out which administrator did, to measure it. We thought it'd be hard to measure how much each administrator did. And so, yeah, if we give every administrator the same amount, there's going to be some who worked more hours and did more during those extra hours than others. But we really don't have a way to determine how to do that. So, it's kind of like cutting the Gordian knot, you know, you can't untangle all this stuff. So, we just, you know, cut it in half and came up with a number, and that's what our recommendation was. We did, we did spend a lot of time talking about it, though, and we took into account the points that you made and some other, other points as well. And so, and I know that Jen, if she was here, I'm sure she could probably speak better than I am on this. And she felt very strongly that this was the right way to go.
Yep. So, at this point, our administrators are the only ones who haven't had any sort of additional compensation during COVID.
Yes, and that's because the federal funds that were allocated for all, a lot of the extra costs of dealing with COVID, those funds were not allowed to be used to increase administrator salaries. They were allowed to be used to pay teachers extra and hourly support staff extra.
The place where they were not permitted was for your year-round, 260-day contract administrators. Those funds that were used to support other staff, and, which by the way was a great investment, were not eligible for use for those people that have the 260-day contracts.
So, how were the teachers compensated?
Through the fall, we started off at four hours a week. There was an additional two hours a week for special ed teachers. There was a paperwork burden. As we learned that there was a deadline for expending those funds, we increased the number of hours. I believe we were up to six to eight to 10 hours by the end of December. And then, if you folks remember, we were granted, you don't have to have all these funds expended by December 30th. So, we were able to reinstate at the four-hour level, I want to say, starting in mid to the end of January.
So, teachers automatically received four additional hours or 10 additional hours?
They clocked in time for those hours.
They clocked in. Okay.
And were paid for those. And Paul is right. That doesn't necessarily recognize all the additional hours that a salaried employee puts in, but it is a recognition of the additional time that was required for planning for hybrid remote.
Do we, do we need to go into executive session for this? This is one of my areas I'm not sure about.
I don't think so, right. For me personally, I don't have questions that require going into executive session.
So, I just did some, some quick math. If you were to take the $5,000 and spread it across over the course of 12 months, it would be an rate around $415 extra a month. So, just my brain, my brain says, okay, so how much extra were the teachers making? Like, are we, are we close to being fair with what we're giving additionally to the administrators versus what we gave additionally to the teachers? Does anyone have any?
I think if you look at the number of weeks, you know, 20 or so odd weeks at four, six, eight, 10 hours a week, and the hourly rate is in the 35, $33, $34 an hour range. So, for teachers that are getting compensated for those additional hours, we can run those numbers. The other piece for the administrators that Paul and Jen talked about was the amount of vacation time they were not able to take.
Yeah. Right. Yeah. And breaking that down further, it would average right around an extra $100 a week, which would be fairly even with an extra $33 for, it's actually a little bit less depending on. It just isn't over the course of the entire year.
Yeah.
Dan, oh, sorry.
We had building administrators who, we had a report of a positive COVID case within their building. And so, that entailed an immediate series of actions that had to be performed, including contact tracing. So, let's say you got that, that positive COVID case on Friday, midday, guess what the teachers, okay, guess what the administrators spent most of the weekend doing?
No doubt.
Doing all that contact tracing. And that, you just never knew when that was going to happen. And it happened enough times that it made an impact on, you know, all of our administrators at one point or another.
Yep. No, I am absolutely in no way saying I don't think they should receive a stipend. That is not where I'm at. I'm just trying to figure out if the way that we're doing it is the best way to do it.
And that was a question that we began with.
Yeah.
Is this way the best way? And we explored other ways of doing it, but we just kept coming, running up against these, you know.
How do you measure?
Yeah, how do you measure? And, you know, we don't have the data, we don't have the tools, we don't have the insight to, you know, even with Dan, who's closer to the, much closer to the action than Jen and I are, you know, just, we just don't have that.
Without, without asking administrators to track the additional hours, which we didn't.
No, of course not.
That was a question that came up when the funds were first made available. Do we track this?
Yeah.
And our understanding was that those funds were not, federal funds were not available. So, and really, if you look at your administrators, and same with the teachers, they don't track their hours. They, they do.
They work until the work is done.
They do what they need to do until the job is done.
However, we were asking.
I defer to Paul. I look back and say, you know, Paul and Jen had that conversation.
Yep. So, how many hours overall were teachers able to be compensated for?
I don't have the total from the time that we started in the fall to now. But it's been, with the exception of a three- or four-week period in January, when we were trying to determine if those funds were going to be available to us, it's been at least four hours a week for teachers across the board, and that included anybody under the teacher contract who's salaried. It was increased to six or eight hours a week partway through the fall, then up to 10 hours a week in the month of December. Because we wanted, we wanted to recognize the work that they were doing. Then it came back to the four hours per week for regular ed teachers, an additional two hours a week for special ed teachers, I want to say, late January, early February. And that's been in place since then.
And it still is currently.
Yeah.
So, that adds up to, again, me and my, my quick phone calculator math, that adds up to, at four hours a week, that adds up to about, at a $33 an hour rate, that adds up to about $4,200 at just the four-hour levels. When you add the additional hours, it probably is fairly, fairly even.
Is there any way the Finance Committee can go back and look at anything for our ed techs, our janitorial, our us?
Well, again, we, we considered them, but they have all been, they're all hourly workers. So, every additional hour that they worked, they got paid for. It's only the administrators who are salaried.
Yeah.
Who weren't getting compensated.
And they were working a lot. I will say, I, it just, my path in going into town, I have to, I, to go by always a high school, and I usually by the middle school. And I have a habit of always looking, and those cars are there all the time. And way more so than even any previous year. It was, I don't know how much they saw their homes.
Yeah. No, no, I, absolutely. So, when I bring up the hourly employees, it's not that, and I recognize they get an hourly rate, and if they go above, they get time and a half. But I'm just thinking about those employees who are working their normal day. However, what they're doing during that day is so much, it's, it's beyond what they would typically be doing. So, I would love to be able to compensate them in some way, shape, or form, but.
I think we, Jen and I recognize that everyone, it's not just the time that people are putting in. It's, it's the, the stress and the strain.
Yep.
But we saw, we set our task to be, let's find a way to compensate for the extra time.
Yep.
And we, we were able to do that pretty early on with the hourly employees. We found a way to do it with the teachers, and the last group remaining is the administrators. And so, this was a way to help compensate them for their time and loss of vacation time. And so, again, it's hard to measure, it's hard for us to be able to, we recognize that there's extra stress for everybody at every level.
And I think, I think one of the biggest things isn't necessarily a question of whether or not the administrators should get a stipend. I think it's more, is there an option to continue to examine the idea of some of our hourly employees? Because, you know, even at an hourly rate, what, how many hours do they have to work in order for it to be considered overtime? It's still 40.
Forty hours a week.
So, I mean, you figure an ed tech potentially who's working usually from 7:00 AM till 2:30. Like, they would have to work additional hours before they would even get to the point of additional pay. Like, yes, they get paid, but, but they don't, it's not like it's, it's, it's no secret, it's not a huge amount, you know, that, that that position gets in, in most schools. So, I think, you know, my thought is, I'm, I'm with Kelly here, that, that there's been a lot for, for some of our support staff. And I don't think it's a question of whether or not our administrators have 150% earned a stipend. It's whether we have any room anywhere to further examine our support staff. That maybe, I mean, they may have gotten some overtime, but, but odds are, they, they probably, at the end of the day, didn't clear, clear a ton.
And that's certainly something the board can ask the Finance Committee to look into.
I feel like all eyes are on me right now.
It's discussion.
I, I'm sorry. I, I just, I keep going back to, I, I just, I'm not overly comfortable with the blanket amount. I think that we need to do more digging, and maybe it's a percentage of a salary. It's, I don't know. I'm just not comfortable. But that's just, that's just me. And I'm just one person on this board. So.
Part of what Jen and I also talked about is, we, we had set out on this conversation a while back. I don't remember exactly when. We had hoped to be able to bring this to the board, I think, at our last meeting. But we weren't ready yet. And, but we're feeling like it's now the end of May. The school year ends in just over a month.
Yeah.
And we, we'd really like, we, we both felt that we wanted to get this done, that the administrators have, if we, if we postponed it to another time, if we tabled it or said we have to go back and look at it again, I think that would be pretty disappointing to a lot of them. And personally, I'd hate to do that. I think, I'm hoping that even though it's the same amount for everybody, that people who will receive it in, with the appreciation that this is, we found it, we found a simple, elegant solution to this. And I think, you know, I'm hoping that no one will feel like, gee, I wish I had gotten more, or that person deserves more. But I think, I'm hoping everyone will say, okay, well, thank, you know, I'm glad they did something.
Yep, absolutely.
Now, what would be the process that we would, would we have to make a motion of any kind in order to ask the Finance Committee to look into that further? I, I just, I know we have a motion on the floor already, but I'm just wondering how that would work.
I don't think you need a motion. You can just ask us to do it.
Just ask.
Just ask.
I was going to say, you could go either direction. You could make a request, and you have a member of that committee here, or you could take an action. My sense is, if you were to ask the committee, one of our committees to do something, they would do it.
Yeah. He's, he's sitting right here, so.
Can I ask for clarification on, because it kind of plays into this. But if it needs to go into executive session to answer, I understand that too. But can I ask a question about vacation time and our salaried employees? Basically, if they did not take their vacation this last year, because of COVID kept them so busy, did they then lose that vacation? Does it not roll over?
It doesn't roll over. In the contract, there, there is an opportunity to request rolling vacation time over. And we actually talked about that with the administrators last summer, and whether we go forward with the request. But looking at what the summer was going to be like moving forward, if you rolled a number of days forward, the question was going to be, when are you going to take them? I would like to think, in, in taking the optimistic view of things and the way things are going, that that wouldn't be a concern this year. But I still think that there is some work to do moving forward. So, the answer is yes, Abby. There is a piece in the contract where they can request to have days moved forward. But if they don't do that, you're right, they don't roll forward.
Do they have to request individually, or is it something, once again, all of them do together?
It would be an individual request on the contract.
And they go to you, and then do you guys approve it, or do you have to come to us?
No, this, this comes to you guys.
Okay.
The, the, the one thing I would put out there on that is, you could do that, but they still, starting July 1st, their vacation allotment starts again. So, the question's going to be, when, when would they be able to take those days?
Did you say July 1st or 30th?
July 1st. I'm sorry, July 1st.
So, it really is like round.
Start of the fiscal.
Yeah. So, so at this point, one could make a very educated guess that a lot of our administrators are going to be losing some vacation time that they have earned. So, because that does play into, you know, the overall picture, I guess.
It does. It does.
Do we have any other questions or any more discussion we want to have?
So, could it be a possibility that we allow administrators to use their vacation time that they had this year for like the next three years, plus we provide them a state, a stipend, but in a different way? I'm, I.
Can you ask the first part of the question again? I'm just trying to follow through, Kelly.
Okay, so, could our administrators possibly use the vacation time that was allotted for them this past year? Could we roll that over? So, yep, you can use that time within the next three years, whenever you want. So, they don't lose it.
But they don't have to use it.
They don't have to use it immediately, but they have time to use it. But then we go back and look at how we're administering the stipends. I mean, I obviously, I want everyone to have a stipend. I want everyone to not lose their vacation time. But I just don't, I just have, I seriously have an issue with how we're doing it. A blanket overall for everyone, $5,000. For me, that's a challenge. But others may not feel that way, and that's fine. And that's why we have five people on a board, not just one.
I think the answer on the rolling over, I think that's an easy answer for one year, Kelly.
Yep.
You can roll over X number. I think it would require looking at the language to see if it's possible, and I'm also trying to think about how that's, it's the record-keeping of it.
Or is it a contract change? For three years, would it have to be an actual contract change? That's what I keep wondering. Does it?
The provisions in the contract to allow some days to be carried over, that's our idea, so I don't think you need to make a contract change.
But for three years, like an extension, like, you know what I'm saying? Because does that language change enough that you have to change a contract?
I don't think so.
But that could.
I can, I can research that question. I, I can't give, I can give the answer for one year. I can't give you the answer for three years.
Okay.
Because, I mean, I obviously can't speak for anybody else, but I, I don't feel like the, whether or not they can roll their vacation time over to use it over the course of three years or one is, is the determining factor of, of a vote on the stipend or not. It would just be really nice to know, excuse me, that they can roll that over further and have more time to use it. So, that I feel like would be a good question to ask moving forward.
And Mr. Higgins, there are also a couple of names on the list that I didn't recognize. Were, are there any names on there that were hourly?
No.
No, okay. They're all salary. Okay.
Nope, two, two of them, you know, there are some who are central office employees and office employees. But two of them were two of our maintenance supervisors who aren't classified as, their contracts are full year.
Yeah.
But when you think of your full-time administrators, they're not often classified in that, but they worked.
Hard.
Oh, I'm sure. I'm sure.
They would fall into the same category, so that's why those names were included.
Absolutely. Okay.
Carolyn, Carolyn Heller picked that up over at the office.
Oh, glad she did.
Yeah, me too.
Do we feel like we have enough information? Let me just ask if everyone feels comfortable making a vote tonight?
I think I'm comfortable making a vote.
You may comfortable making a vote? Are you comfortable making a vote one way or the other?
I can make a vote.
Okay. Well, it makes a difference. Are, do we think we're ready for the vote, or do we think we need to discuss a little further?
I'm ready to give a vote.
Ready? Okay. So, here, having no more discussion, all in favor of the motion that's on the table for our stipends? All those opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Number three, consideration of teacher nomination.
Very pleased. And again, I'm going to keep knocking on wood because we've brought you some names of candidates that have been outstanding, and we're bringing forth another one. Nomination this evening is for a English-language arts teacher at Ellsworth High School who will serve at the freshman level in the freshman academy, Jennifer MacArthur. Building-level interview committee recommends her as the nominee based upon their interview, her enthusiasm for students, teaching at the secondary level, and her love of teaching English. Their impression was that her background and experience, which includes two years teaching at the middle level, it's a seventh-grade level, and a partial year teaching secondary students in a high school in southern Penobscot County, will facilitate her transition to Ellsworth High School. Her references place her ability to work collaboratively with colleagues and develop a strong and positive rapport with students. The committee feels that Mrs. MacArthur will be a solid addition to Ellsworth High School and the freshman academy. And when I did my second interview with her, I came across equally as impressed. And my reference call that I always make came back with positive references. So, I'm pleased to make this nomination of Jen MacArthur for a first-year probationary contract for the 21-22 school year. And welcome your consideration.
I make a motion to confirm the superintendent's nomination of Jennifer MacArthur for a first-year probationary contract teacher for the 2021-22 school year.
Second up, all those, any discussion? All those in favor?
Great, thank you.
Yay.
And just for, for the Personnel Committee, I know we're scheduled to meet on Thursday. I'm hoping to possibly include one and maybe two nominations for you Thursday afternoon, so keep your fingers crossed.
That will be welcomed. Yes.
Very exciting. All right.
So, number four, review consideration of requests for leave, potential session, executive session, under 1 MRSA Title 20-14056A.
May I make a recommendation, and this is for your consideration? I would like. I would like for the board to go into executive session, so I can provide you a little bit more information. But if you're going to do that, well, you've got to come back and vote anyway. So I was going to say, we can do the announcements now, but we can do those afterwards when you come back and vote.
You know what, let's do the announcements now, just so if people are watching, don't want to have to stay tuned in to hear them later after we come back. Would that be okay?
And you can always revisit them at that point in time also. Yep.
Okay. So very quickly, calendar announcements, school board meeting Tuesday, June 8th at 6:00 PM. This is going to be different, guys. This is going to be at the Hancock County Technical Center. This is because that is also the day we hope everybody goes to vote for the budget. So this will be in use for that. The school board workshop will be Tuesday, June 22nd at 6:00 PM here in City Council Chambers. And we will soon identify dates for a school board summer retreat.
And I know when I spoke with Jen in setting up the agenda for this, we wanted to make sure we put that on the table tonight, but I think in her absence, this evening, we may want to wait on that. But her idea, and I concur with her, is let's get some dates out there sooner rather than later, so we can make sure we get something on the calendar, because.
Because summers are busy.
Summer goes fast. Yep.
You're, you're both 100% right.
Well, when you said identify dates for a school board summer retreat, I had a moment where I thought, summer retreat? Talking about that already? And then I was like, it's almost June.
And the official start of summer is this weekend, so.
Oh, my gosh, it is.
Yep. All right. All right, so I will make a motion to enter executive session under 1 MRSA Title 20-1, 4056A, for the sole purpose of reviewing a request for extension of leave.
And just so people know, if we go into executive session, we will have to come back online to vote, but we don't have an exact time. So I second that motion. Discussion? All in favor? Very good. Okay.
So we're going to go into executive session, 6:37?